Welcome everyone to tonight's regular meeting of the Friendswood City Council at the FISD Administration Annex Building. As you're aware, FISD has graciously allowed the city to utilize this boardroom. City Council, don't turn the lights off while I'm reading. What's that? Linda? I have to put my glasses on. We're here while our city council chambers is under renovation. We expect to be back in city council in our council chamber for our February 2026 regular meeting. That's what we expect. We used to expect to be there for the January meeting. Now we expect to be there. Stronger expectations. Looking at you. All right. Item two, tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Stephen Kimpel of LifePoint Church. Thanks for being here Pastor. If y'all would mind standing for this, and then we'll remain standing for the pledges.
Of course, it's an honor to be here and a privilege to lead us in prayer, in prayer meeting tonight. But God, we thank you so much for the opportunity to gather together tonight. Even this last week, for so many of us in this room, we had a day to pause and to think of all of the reasons we should be grateful. Grateful for family and grateful for good education. Grateful for the freedoms we enjoy. Grateful for you. So I pray that you give discernment and clarity over all the different things being considered from this room. That you give wisdom that matches your own. Give us a greater understanding of yourself. The prayer this is just saying, I know.
Thank you Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas land, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you all for being here tonight. This is kind of a special occasion. If you hadn't noticed, we have some second graders out here that are about to come up and show us how it's done. So I'm going to read this council for a day, item number four. Consider a proclamation declaring Klein Elementary School Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas. We've been doing this council for a day program for seven years. We took COVID off, so we've done it a bunch of times, and we're always excited. It's the most fun we have at a council meeting frankly, is when we get to see second graders really show us how it's done. I always say if I could just get these council members to read from the script, everything would go very smoothly. They reject that idea. The reason we bring these kids over to council is so they can learn a little bit about how our government works, understand the value of community service, remind them that we are all volunteers up here. We are elected to these positions, but we do it for nothing. We, I guess you get what you pay for sometimes. We are volunteers up here, and we want to instill that fact in them and foster leadership development, and also support FISD's character education program. So we love having them here. You know, there's more pictures taken during one of these council meetings than all the rest of council meetings during the year combined. So I'm going to call up these students up here one by one, and it's always great to have the principal, Mayor Ms. McCarty, and of course Thad Roar from the superintendent's here as well. So thank you Thad for, again, for sharing your space with us. And I know it's really Tammy, but we appreciate you.
And Tammy. We appreciate Tammy too.
We do appreciate you Tammy.
Yeah.
So first off, how are we going to do this? This is a little bit out of order, but first we're going to do city secretary, Austin Smith, from Ms. Carter's class. Where are you Ms. Carter? Stand up for just a second. Council member position number six, Sophia Carter, from Ms. Salazar's class. You know, there are a lot of Carters on my list here tonight. Ms. Carter, Sophia Carter, I'm going to get Oliver Carter. But Ms. Salazar, are you here? Ms. Salazar, still on vacation? I didn't realize when we asked you all to do this tonight that it was going to be the first day of school after Thanksgiving break. So thank you. That took a little extra, I note, for you guys to get them ready and then go on a break for a week, and then today remind them of where to be and what to say. Okay, continuing. Council member position number five, Sophia Silvers. Ms. Ackerman, stand up. Council member position number four, Charlotte Metzl. From Ms. Volk's class. Ms. Volk's, are you here? All right. Mayor is Garrett French. From Ms. Ramsey's class. Ms. Ramsey, thank you. I know we skipped over council member Hank's position here, but that's just because we have a weird seating arrangement up here for these meetings. Go ahead. All right. Council member position number three, Oliver Carter, from Ms. Salazar's class. Hey Olivia, you should spell your name a different way. It's, sorry. Olivia Carter. We already established Mrs. Salazar's not here. Council member position number two, Gage Hanson. It's unfortunate. I'm letting you two guys sit together tonight. Probably not. Council member position number one, Nora McQuinn.
She's number one.
Yes. Council position number one is also the mayor pro temp currently, so I have added duties if I didn't get briefed on this. Our city attorney is Jonathan Chester. From Ms. Hank's class, Ms. Hank's got me. And city manager, toughest job, Archer Bridges. Again, from Ms. Volk's class. He does see the audience. He can't see this. We actually, all council members have a little kid in his.
Glad he didn't sit in position four.
Can we trade? Can we trade? Can I trade for my candy?
Okay, Mayor, over to you. Good luck.
Consider a proclamation declaring December 2nd, 2025 as CW Klein Elementary, name the city of Friendswood, Texas. Would the city manager please give the council an overview of the item?
Mayor and council, tonight you have before you a proposed proclamation declaring December 2nd, 2025, CW Klein Elementary Day in Friendswood, Texas. As you know, CW Klein Elementary is part of the Friendswood Independent School District and is an exemplary campus and a source of pride for our community.
As our city attorney, as our city attorney, approve the wording of the proposed proclamation?
Yes, Mayor, I have drafted the wording of the proposed proclamation, and it is in line with the vision statement of the city of Friendswood.
Will the city secretary please read the city's vision statement for the record?
The city of Friendswood has a following statement. As its vision together, we build our future in a friendly place to live, work, play, learn, and worship.
Thank you. Now I will read the proposed proclamation. This proposed proclamation of the city of Friendswood, Texas declares December 2nd, 2025 as CW Klein Elementary, name the city of Friendswood, Texas. It is now time to take a vote. Do I have a motion accepting the proposed proclamation?
I move to that we accept the proposed proclamation as presented.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, accepting the proposed proclamation. Is there any discussion?
At CW Klein Elementary, we pledge to be kids with character, and we pledge to be bucket fillers.
At CW Klein Elementary, we will be honest, reliable, and worthy of trust.
We will be responsible and fair, doing what we must. At CW Klein Elementary, with our words and actions, we show that we care. We will be good citizens and do our share. At CW Klein Elementary, we will respect ourselves and others too.
We will accept the best in all we do.
Would the city secretary please read the motion on the table?
We have a motion by council member McQuinn and a second from council member Hanson to accept a proposed proclamation of city of Friendswood, Texas, declare December 2nd, 2025 as CW Klein Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas.
We have a motion and a second. In all favor, please raise your hand. In any opposed, please raise your hand. Motion passes, seven to zero. Congratulations, CW Klein Elementary School. With there being no other business, I, Jordan, miss council day for council for a day meeting.
All right, we'll get going here. Item five is council comments and reports. Mayor Pro Tem Ellisore, you got anything to comment on?
Just in the theme of Thanksgiving, I'm thankful to live in Friendswood and to serve with this fine council. Thankful for my family, for my relationship with God. It's just a lot to be thankful for.
We love having you here. Council member Branson?
Well, I do agree. I am very thankful and very, we are blessed to live in this community, no doubt about it. Did want to give a couple of updates. Attended a transportation policy council meeting this past month, and Marod Kabiri steered or chaired our technical advisory committee, and we reviewed the bylaws. And here's the part that's really exciting. We were able to increase the number of small city seats on the, excuse me, it used to be called transportation, now it's called technical advisory committee, from three to four. And what that means is cities with a population of less than 50,000 now have an additional representative on the technical advisory committee. So that's, that's big because generally you have to have 50,000 or more to have a seat at the table. So that's huge. Also wanted to mention that the Friendswood Historical Society had our second annual life member celebration in November, and we welcomed in ten, new life members. So we're very excited about that. And then tomorrow night, now there's lots of Christmas festivities going on, but tomorrow night, the Historical Society is having their annual Christmas tree lighting at the Brown Museum. It'll kick off around 6:30. And then last but not least, I just would like to say, it's been, serving the citizens of Friendswood on the city council for the past eight and a half years has really been one of the greatest honors of my life. With prayerful consideration and the full support of my family, which I appreciate y'all being here this evening, I am excited to announce that I will be seeking reelection for, in May, for the fourth term, which is my final term on city council position two. I thank you for this privilege and your consideration as we look forward.
Council member Hank's.
I would just ditto what council member Ellisore said about being thankful and being thankful for living here. Thank you, Councilwoman Branson, for your willingness to continue to serve. I appreciate that. And we won't see each other again until after the first of the year, so I hope everyone has a great holiday and see you in 2026.
Council member Graffon?
Well, same, as ditto to you all. Hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving with their family and friends. I did. I think I ate too much turkey. It's kind of made me lethargic. I don't really feel like, I'm never going to eat another turkey, I can tell you that. But I hope everybody has a wonderful Christmas holidays that are coming up, and you get done everything you're supposed to get done, because right now I'm way behind. But, and Sally, thank you for running again. We certainly enjoyed you on the dais these many years. So here goes another year and another term possible. So here we go. Thank you, and thank you for letting me serve as your council member.
Council member Matranga?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. It's always special to see everybody come, especially in our, in our new temporary offices here. Thank you. Again, I don't want to just keep piling on, but I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. And we won't see you till January 5th, those of you that will attend our January meeting. So in the meantime, have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I did want to mention that I spent the day volunteering at Friendswood's Fall Hall, and that's always such a special event, special benefit to our residents, where you can get rid of unwanted tree limbs and yard waste and unwanted appliances and household goods. And last but not least is the great benefit of the paper shredding. I know that I personally use that every year there. I wanted just to kind of, just to give everybody a flavor, if you haven't been involved with that, or been out there to participate, a little over 470 residents came by on that one day and dropped off items. About 52 tons of waste was collected, which is awesome. I think that's, again, a huge benefit to all of our residents. Roughly 12,000 pounds of paper was shredded. So we, in that day, we had about six city staff members that I wanted to thank for all of their hard work in planning and getting that ready. And we had over 40 volunteers with Keep Friendswood Beautiful and otherwise, people that just wanted to help out that were part of that day. So again, thanks to all of them. Thanks, Marod, for your city staff. I think it was a well-received and a great benefit to our community. Okay, my final comment is that, similar to council member Branson, I am proud to call Friendswood home, and it's been an honor to serve its residents for the last two and a half years. But in May, my term, my first term, will be over. I am announcing tonight that I intend to stand for reelection in May of 2026 for another three-year term. I think we've accomplished a lot in the last two and a half years, and if reelected, I know that we, I will continue to work to make Friendswood a better place to live, work, and raise our families. Thank you.
Council member Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, thank you for volunteering on that Fall Hall, because I think the spring clean and the Fall Hall are some of the great things that happen in this community that allow us to, one, keep everything looking spitballist and shiny, and, two, it brings everybody together and makes everything better for everybody. So I really appreciate you volunteering. Call me up next time. I'll be right there with you. Because, I mean, that's one of the things I really enjoy, is having those happen this year. Thanksgiving was an amazing blessing for my family. We hosted 27 people at my house. My household's about 12. So it was really a blessing to have that many people come and visit and share, share time with us. Likewise, I expect similar type attendance for Christmas. But that being said, one of the things, seeing all these beautiful children, is I've watched e-bikes and something similar type bikes and motorcycles and things like that being driven by children younger than these on our city streets, and it is starting to become alarming to me that parents aren't really paying attention to what their children are doing. It's at 3 o'clock when the bus lets them off at their house, it's a bit of a free-for-all. And I really want you, as parents, to think, what is my child doing? That e-bike is cool and fun, but it is also a huge responsibility, because if they're on our streets, they're out there with vehicles that can't see them, and they're, they're too small. And I've seen too much of it in my community, my community specifically lately. So I wanted to remind everybody at Christmas, if that's something you think you wish to partake in, please be mindful that there is a huge responsibility to keep your child safe and allow them to use them in a responsible way. Thank you.
Thank you. And speaking of Christmas, has everyone seen some of the Christmas decorations going up? Don't they look fantastic? How about a round of applause for our parks? I think we could thank FDEDC for funding some of that, and I know-
Yes, sir.
James Tony and his staff kind of bear the brunt of putting it all up, taking it all down. Do a fantastic job. Go Green Wave.
Our green, Mean Green Eagles, you mean, this week?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's not really what I meant, but, you know, Navy was fortunate this year to not have to play Tulane. They're in the same conference. I digress now, but Marod's dragging me further. And we did lose to the University of North Texas, so I won't be saying anything about the Mean Green, but I do, I do think Tulane should have ended up higher in the rankings than UNT. But, all right, all right, that's my public comment. That's, that's enough. Now, item six, public comment. To comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda as such. The city council will listen to public comment and may either refer the item to city management for further action, or direct staff to place an item on a future agenda. During public comment, public shall comply with the council's rules of decorum. Everyone desiring to present comments should have completed the public hearing comment card in the foyer and submitted it to the city secretary at the podium. Each participant shall give his or her name and address in order to provide a proper record. The rules allow each person three minutes to present information. However, I encourage everyone to be as brief and to the point as possible. First person, Don Johnson.
Thank you very much. I think I know everybody up here. I was looking through the agenda, and I noticed there was a packet from GCAD. And when I saw that, I just couldn't resist coming down here and throwing my, my two cents worth in. I think it's real important that the small cities of Galveston County have good representation on there. And if Mayor Mike were on the ballot, I'd be all for Mayor Mike, but he's not there. So what my recommendation would be, please consider Robin Collins, the mayor of Kima. She knows the ins and outs of running a city, and she knows the problems that, you know, small cities have, and how important it is to get the appraisal budget out on time and keep the budget within reasonable bounds. There was a big fight this past year over keeping the GCAD budget reasonable. And fortunately, there were enough people on the board there that saw that that happened. And if you put Robin on the board, I'm sure she will follow through in that same vein. So my recommendation is please consider Robin Collins for your GCAD Friendswood votes. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Okay, item seven, special recognition and acknowledgements. Present the city of Friendswood Five Star Spirit Award for the third quarter of 2025 to Ashley Hune, Animal Services Supervisor in the Police Department. Ashley?
Thank you, Mayor. And Ashley, if you can come up, I didn't see where you were sitting. So Ashley was nominated by two residents for the third quarter of 2025. She is our Animal Services Supervisor and has been with us for a few years now. One of the things that she was nominated for was her handling of a possum issue, but more importantly, the things and initiatives she's instilled in our Animal Services Department. Adoptions have gone up way up. We've been attending multiple events, and all thanks to Ashley's leadership. So thank you, Ashley, and congratulations.
Mayor, can I say a word about that?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Council member Matranga?
I've worked with Ashley since she joined Friendswood Animal Services, and I just have to echo, it's a, it's a great recognition. But every day that, since I've met her, and every time I've worked with her, she has done nothing but drive herself hard, drive her team hard. And she's got a lot of determinations to find those lost pets and get them back to their owners. And for all the pets that are strays in Friendswood, which we do have a few, she works hard to find them forever home. So I just applaud your dedication, and I think it's a great honor that, that you received this evening, and well deserved.
All right, item eight, work session topic. Discuss various service contracts into which the city has routinely entered with nonprofit and other governmental entities in which the city pays to secure specific services, furthering a public purpose. So city manager, Marod Kabiri?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. You may recall, last month, we had the BayHEP contract up for consideration, or two months ago. Council member Graffon, I believe, asked for an item to be workshopped with this group, going over all of our various nonprofit contracts and agreements the city has in place. On the screen before you, there's a list of the current agreements, ranging anywhere from a few thousand dollars, $3,500, I believe is the lowest one, all the way up to $20,000. Or the Health District, we give $30,000 for our water pollution control and abatement services. These agreements have been in place for a number of years. For background purposes, we included the past five fiscal years to give you some reference. For the most part, most of the agreements stayed constant. Each one of these individual groups does something for the city of Friendswood in exchange for these, these, these aren't membership dues, these are agreements, dollars. And before we move forward with any other agreements, we wanted the discussion with council. I believe Graffon had some comments he wanted to mention.
Council member Graffon?
I'm trying to find them in the computer here, because I can't see them over there. But I, I do know that I have mentioned in the past about the money, the 17,000 and change, over the next three years for BayHEP. I have come around to BayHEP. I believe that that's a great organization, and I believe that that money is well spent. And what, what number am I in, in my computer? Because there's, there's several of them I wanted to look at. Yeah, so the city of Friendswood is spending approximately for 2025, $73,000 total in partnerships with organizations that may or may not, or should or should not be receiving funds from the city of Friendswood, and the taxpayers of Friendswood is my belief and thought. And like I mentioned, BayHEP, I've visited with Brian a couple of times and have gone to the meetings. BayTrend, since, for year 2022, has started receiving a stipend from the city of Friendswood in the amount for 2025 for $3,500. The Friendswood Chamber of Commerce is collecting $20,000 a year from the taxpayers of Friendswood for their affiliation with the city of Friendswood. The Friendswood Historical Society Museum is now, we just bumped that up in the year 2023 to $17,500 a year. And the Friends of the Friendswood Public Library, which is an organization I do support and have supported, had been sued this past year for reasons not their making at all. And they are receiving funds of $15,000 this year. The Friends of Downtown Friendswood Association receives no monies from the city of Friendswood. Paris-Galveston Subsidence District, which is a very, what I consider a fairly wealthy district, is receiving $19,380 a year. And the Galveston County Health District is receiving this year $30,000, which is imperative pollution control and water testing. Of these two, of, there are two that I, I think that we should really take a hard look at as a council, the Chamber of Commerce and the Subsidence District, which has a very- council, the Chamber of Commerce and the Subsidence District, which has a very wealthy and healthy budget. And, and y'all all know how I feel about programs being presented to our kids through the Harris County Subsidence District. But I think that those two should be either eliminated or curtailed quite a bit. I'm, I'm not sure how much the Friendswood Chamber of Commerce contributes to the City of Friendswood. And Mo, could you tell me what other cities are paying their chambers of commerce in, in comparison to what the City of Friendswood is?
Yes, sir. So the very next slide has a comparison of Friendswood, Pearland, Webster, and Alvin. I'll get to, to Pearland in a second, but the City of Alvin, for instance, pays about three hundred dollars a year for their agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. The City of Webster pays less than a thousand dollars. Pearland does, through their Economic Development Corporation, contribute close to three hundred thousand, but that's in exchange for an innovation hub that the Chamber of Commerce has created, basically helping new startups and entrepreneur-type programs relocate their businesses to the City of Pearland. Friendswood is, these were just the four cities that have looked at recently, but Friendswood is on the higher end of most of the cities in the Houston metro area. Obviously, the agreement we have is in, in place is in exchange for services rendered. So the Chamber of Commerce hosts a number of events throughout the year, whether it's Halloween in the park or the car show, in exchange for that twenty thousand dollars. Whether or not that's a fair exchange, that's debatable and something that this council would have to, to weigh in on.
Well, that's kind of what I'd like for us to workshop and all of us to visit about, what we should be thinking about in terms of what should, we should be paying the chamber. Like I, like I said, I support the Friends of the Library. They do a wonderful job. A very ridiculous thing happened, and they got pulled into a lawsuit, and that had nothing to do with them. And I support the Friends of the Public Library. And the Historical Society is local, and our museums are imperative to the happiness and health and welfare of a bunch of us that are even in those museums. And I know that Sally had mentioned, you know, giving them, and I see we have bumped them up seventeen-five, but insurance is super high now for these buildings that, that we're trying to keep up. And maybe we could save some money from these other partnerships that we're in to help support some of these local, local communities versus sending it off. And, and maybe I can visit with Don Johnson a little bit later, just to figure out what their, their annual budget is and why they need nineteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars from the City of Friendswood. No, thirteen, nineteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars from the City of Friendswood. We do everything in compliance with the Subsidence District to gain our credits that we are supposed to gain, so that we will never be in a situation where we will be fined if we are using surface water. So these are some of the things that I just wanted to bring up in a workshop and, and just have us discuss. I think that we should cut how much we pay to the chamber and how much we pay to the Subsidence District. And the Health District, I just need to know a little more about that. I know that once we get over fifty-five thousand dollars, we will be having to have our own hospital and health district, but right now, we're using Gallatin UTMB, right?
So the Health District is, you would have to have your own department to address concerns and complaints that come in once you exceed fifty thousand in population at a decennial census. So for us, that won't take place till twenty-four, forty. We wouldn't have to have a, a hospital, per se. I did want to comment, one of the concerns with the chamber contract was their routine, their normal members, the, pay anywhere from three to five hundred dollars a year. So-
I pay two seventy-five.
So the City of Friendswood is the only payee. We're not members. We have an agreement with them that pays twenty thousand dollars. And as comparison, Friendswood Independent School District pays four hundred dollars a year to the Chamber of Commerce. So that's what initiated the concern and the, the conversation.
That was gonna be my question, is what did the school just pay to the chamber?
Four hundred.
I agree with Councilmember Grifon. I would like to have the opportunity to vote on lowering that amount.
I think, you know, I think we'd all say the same thing, and there is a little sticker shock. If, maybe you could take that message back, Don, with how, how much your Science District raised our rate this year. But still, I'm not asking for you to comment on that. I don't want you to comment on that. I, this is just a workshop item. But I think we're at a point where we have a little bit of negotiating room with these people, especially hearing from council. So I think, anybody else want to make a comment, go ahead, because I think we're all saying the same thing. And that, that gives Murad and the staff some ammunition to go, gives them a mandate more or less to go and negotiate for us and, and talk to them about what, what is fair and what, what could be negotiated.
Well, as I say, I was gonna say, I support taking a look at this and workshopping this and spending more time, looking at the scope of services, what's provided by these groups, what's the value coming back to, to the City of Friendswood for these payments. Obviously, things like the Friends of the Library, they bring back way more, have, you know, consistently over the last several years, bring back more to the city in donations than we spend with them to cover this one issue that Councilmember Grifon mentioned. But things like the Chamber of Commerce, it's hard to put a dollar value, I think, on, hey, this is the value they brought. But they do a lot of services, and they do a lot of things in the City of Friendswood to promote the city and support our businesses. It's got over three hundred members in that chamber. I just want to spend the time, I think it's well worth spending the time, absolutely, to make sure, what's the value for the dollars that we're spending with each of these groups and, and look at that. But I, that is, all my point is really, is that different than anybody else's, is that the scope of services. I think we really need to take a look at that and the value that's coming back, both monetarily and what we think is a reasonable economic return.
Councilmember Ross.
Joe hit on it perfectly. Sorry. Got, Joe hit on it perfectly. What's, what's the ROI for the investments? These are investments, effectively, either in, in kind, I mean, we would expect with Bayhep, you know, we're getting something of value back out of that contract. I visited with Mr. Friedman for an hour and a half and, and got an idea and a good understanding of the scope of their services and what we're getting for our dollars. Likewise, you know, I think we should investigate that as well with any of these organizations. I think that, as was spoken earlier, that the, the local ones is kind of obvious, but what are we getting back from the chamber? I know they do the car show and the, the Halloween, but, you know, are those good returns on our investment for that money? I know we get, people come in from out of town and spend dollars here, but would we have just been better off throwing a big party for our groups out of our own dollars? And, you know, it's just, what are we getting for our money?
I think we all say, it's worth something.
Yeah.
It's worth something. I don't know if it's twenty thousand dollars, but to your point, Robert, I think this is all-
Yeah, we, we just, we all just need to realize, this isn't our money. This is the taxpayers' money of City of Friendswood, and, and we are custodians of it, and we should make sure we spend it wisely.
Any other comments?
I do have no comments. So, I think that was everything that they said right over here. And, but we need to hear from those organizations on what, how they came to that amount. So how did they justify, how does the chamber justify twenty thousand dollars and then charges city council members and the mayor for lunch when we attend the, the monthly lunches, the full price, I think, of the lunch?
Correct.
So there are just some things that I think they need a chance, each one of those need a chance to tell us how they arrived at that number. And then, in addition to, we look at that cost benefit ratio and say, is this a benefit? And do we think it's a benefit to this amount? But I'd like to hear what they say as far as why they are charging what they charge.
Yes, ma'am. Part of the difficulty from an analytical standpoint is that it's gonna be somewhat nebulous identifying the rate of return on our investment made. The Friends of the Library is very simple. You can look at the proceeds from the gala and the amount of money they raised versus the money that the city contributes for the services agreement. With Bayhep, all the members, cities pay the exact same price. So the concern comes to play with the Chamber of Commerce. We're the only one spending twenty thousand dollars, and everybody else that has an agreement with the chamber is spending three, four hundred, five hundred bucks. So it's kind of hard comparing apples to apples. Every member of the chamber benefits when there's a car show, because presumably, those folks that attend will go then to those businesses and patron them. So why is the City of Friendswood contributing twenty thousand versus the chamber members only contributing a few hundred bucks is the concern? And that's what a number of you raised, and hence why it's on the agenda this evening.
I think the action for you, Murad, is your staff needs to go out and do a little work and negotiate, talk, talk to people. I'm not wanting to bring these different groups into here, into this-
Yes, sir.
Forum and try to discuss with them, you know, in, in public, how, how we slice and dice, make the sausage. So that's to you and your staff, and maybe in a month or two, you can come back with some suggestions for us.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else miss anything? All right, item nine, city manager's report. Again, city manager Murad Kabiri.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna be a little long-winded this evening. The first item under the city manager's report is our upcoming Christmas lighted parade that's gonna be held on December thirteenth. This is put on by the Chamber of Commerce, no pun intended for the, the timing of this item. Festivities after the lighted parade are gonna conclude at Stevenson Park, in which case there'll be Santa in the Park, which is the very next item. Santa in the Park this, this year will be the same day, Saturday, December thirteenth, from eight, three P M. to eight P M. There will be a relighting of the Christmas tree and some fireworks that take place later that evening. I don't know, as the mayor mentioned, a lot of the Christmas decorations have gone up, but if, has anybody paid particular attention to the tree? It's beautiful. It is large, and it is, it is absolutely gorgeous. The next item on the city manager's report is our annual Blue Santa program. For those that you have already donated to this worthy cause, thank you. For those that haven't had an opportunity to do so, they're accepting toy donations through December nineteenth. One option that I particularly enjoy participating in is you can do it through Amazon now. So you don't even have to go buy the gift and take it to the police department. You can go online, order from their wish list, and it gets shipped directly to our police department to help these families in need. So it's very simple to, to give and be charitable, and I encourage folks to do so. The next item on the, on the city manager's report is recognizing Assistant City Manager Katina Hampton for recently completing the Texas Women's Leadership Institute program. This was a five-session course that took the better part of one year, working with local leaders, female leaders in our state, and equipping them with the skill sets to take on more and more responsibilities and leadership roles. Katina knew most of this stuff, so it was sort of an old hat for her, but we congratulate her for going through the program and all the work that she's done on that. So-
Stand up, Katina. Yes, stand up, stand up. Good job. Great job.
In the spirit of recognizing recent accomplishments, our EMS captain Stacy Cohn is being recognized by the 2025 American Ambulance Association Star of Life recipient. Stacy was recently in DC to receive this award, this prestigious award. I don't think she's in the audience tonight, probably outside, out saving lives. Okay, well, hopefully, everything's okay on that call. But we would like to recognize Stacy for all the hard work that she's done for a number of years, and, and thank her for that service. We recently hired a new police officer by the name of Shelby Smith. Shelby is our first Friendswood Police Department cadet to go through the Pearland Police Academy. The academy, at the academy, she graduated as valedictorian of her class with an impressive grade point average, or grade of ninety-seven point four-six, so nearly a perfect score. That's both for academic and physical tests that they have to go through. She set two female athletic records in, at the academy for the two thousand meter row, as well as for pull-ups. So a very, very impressive young lady. She holds a master's degree in leadership and management from the University of Houston, Go Cougs, where she played Division One college softball. So we're grateful to have Shelby on our team, and if you are outspeeding or doing anything illegal, look out, she will get you.
She's athletic.
She is athletic. Next, I'd like to recognize Gina Hunt, our, our crime victim liaison, and all the work that our FPD has done. This is the twenty-sixth year that the City of Friendswood has gotten, received the Crime Victim Assistance Program. Obviously know that, you know, this is a vital program to help victims of crimes in our community. It goes beyond just simply a filing of a police report. She spends hours and days and months helping victims navigate the justice process that a lot of times they get left out at, even when we're trying to catch the perp or the criminal that committed the crime. So thank you to Gina and to FPD for securing this grant for this vital service for our Couple of items that were not on the agenda, but they're of, just of informational note that would be of interest to the community. Waste Connections has recently announced that they will do a, a bit of a rerouting for the Wednesday trash service. You may recall some issues with neighborhoods on the Wednesday schedule, not getting their trash picked up in time or picked up the next day simply because they reached maximum limits at the, the landfill, or they've had issues with trying to get everybody. As part of the reroute, there's gonna be some changes to a few other areas in the city. For instance, my recycling's gonna move from Fridays to Tuesdays. So there will be changes to more than just those that were on the Wednesday pickup. This change will start January fifth. As an, as an assistance, Waste Connections will send out backup trucks if anybody gets missed. So if you were on a previous day on a Wednesday and you got moved to a Thursday, but you forgot, for the first three or four weeks, they will provide some additional trucks to make up for those, those issues. We will do a full media blast through social media, utility bill inserts, Friday folders at both Friendswood ISD and CCISD, as well as put up signs in the front of the subdivisions that are being changed so that folks are aware of the changes that are coming their way. And last but not least, associated with that, there will be a, an app that you can download on your phone that we can start sending push notifications through. So if we forget to get Councilmember Hank's trash because we hit our limit, we can send out push notifications so that you're aware to leave it out and it will get picked up the next day.
Soon as they pick up, council member, Mayor Protim Ellisors, they're full.
Yes.
And they can't go the rest of the box.
Well, I, I just go by, pick his up and drop it off at your house. That's why it's still out there.
Just create a log crash.
Last two items, the KFB Fall Hall Statistics. I don't need to rehash this, but a great job by the volunteers and by our Parks and Rec staff for this event. It is one of the most heavily utilized events, this and Spring Sparkle. And the very last item, it was on the posted agenda on the website, a reference to the council candidate packets for May of 2026. That, those packets haven't been completed just yet. They'll be at the January meeting. And very last item, HGAC Active Transportation Plan Meeting. There will be a, a meeting taking place at the Friendswood Public Library on December eighteenth from six to eight, that's a Thursday night. This is in conjunction with our open space and hike and bike plan that HGAC has funded to get input from the community on various modes of active transportation, hiking, biking type trails.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions for city manager? Moving on, item ten, we're not ready on any business items today, so we're gonna move past that on to item eleven. Proposed adoption and updates to international building and fire codes. It is now six twenty-eight, and I now call to order this public hearing concerning the adoption of local amendments to the 2024 International Building Code and the 2024 International Residential Code for one and two-family dwellings. Aubrey, are you, are you up?
Brian's gonna do the presentation for this.
Oh, Brian Ruin? Holy mackerel. For those of you that never have seen Brian Ruin before, this is our building official. He doesn't come out much, but-
No, I, I ventured out like the little ground squirrel that I am.
In short, Scott.
Yeah.
We're glad you're here, Brian. How's that Coast Guard cadet?
She's doing really well. She'll be here next Friday for the national championship for rugby. They'll be playing at the Saber Cat Stadium.
Wow, impressive.
Yep. That's the second year in a row that they've come down here to, to participate in the national championship.
Coast Guard has a rugby team. Wow. It's impressive. And then she graduates.
She graduates in May.
Awesome.
Yep. Civil engineering.
Impressive. Sorry, I got off track there. Go ahead.
So this evening, we're, we're looking to update all of our codes. I've been the building official for ten years. This is the third time I've done it. We'll, we'll probably come back to you in three or four years, where we'll do it again. The codes that we are doing are gonna be the building codes, the residential codes, the electric code, the plumbing and mechanical, energy conservation, and swimming pool code. The, the benefit, obviously, to the- The benefit, obviously, to the community is we're updating the uses and products, and also it just gives us a more sustainable, long-term building product for the community. Obviously, the insurance companies, the first thing they do when they ask your address is look up the date that the house was built, and that goes by on the records of when those codes were adopted, and that's how they'll rate your home. So that's the importance. In order for us to stake a client in that, we have to be within two code iterations. So that is our reason that we do come back to you guys and update our codes frequently. Right now, the codes are in a huge, you know, sustainability and energy efficiency are kind of the push of the codes right now. Those aren't going to affect us nearly as much as, you know, some of the other locations. You know, we are pretty much have been that way already with our low-y windows and insulation and things like that. So there are some adjustments that some contractors will have to do, but it's not going to be anything burden or, or I shouldn't say that, I don't have to spend that money to do it. But that, that is going to be something that's just naturally, we are not the cutting-edge community. We never are. We do kind of follow other communities and let them adopt these codes, and then we just kind of follow in behind them. And the contractors are already aware of the code changes.
Thank you, sir. I have one resident that would like to speak. Dave Yelovitch.
Hi there, everybody. Good job last month on Black Hawk. I'm Dave Yelovitch. I've been a home builder for over 40 years. I've been involved in codes for over 30 of those. Currently ICC, the code certified, R5, which has me involved in electrical, plumbing, all the stuff these guys do on a regular basis. I even teach code classes around the state of Texas to home builders of all people, and they try to get it right. Sometimes they don't. But the 2024 codes are kind of interesting. You mentioned energy, and that's the biggest thing in that code book, is they totally rewrote the energy side of the code book. It's a mishmash, and I would caution, yes, amend the heck out of it. The state of Texas is about to adopt the 24 as their guide, and they've got a list of amendments that I'm going to send to you tomorrow to the city secretary, and she'll forward it to you. But the energy code is where all the money is. Two, for instance, just for fun, if you build a house over 5,000 square feet, you get a penalty. Wow. If you, oh, here's a good one. If you even run gas to your house, you get a penalty in the energy code. They want everyone to go all-electric. That's in the code. So be careful what you adopt, amend strategically, and look for things to change. Toward the back of the 24 code book is the electrical section, and there's other fun things that have already taken place, and Brian's right. We've kind of gotten a hold of these codes and we're figuring it out, so we're just saying, hey, amend responsibly. Like, nobody, nobody in this room likes the thing in the electric code that says you can't have an outlet on your island in your kitchen. Wow. That was a shell shocker, and homeowners don't like that when you're a home builder. But if you do put one in there, it's got to be a certain way, and it costs about $1,000 for a single little outlet up here on top of your countertop. It's crazy. There's other things in the electric code they put in there. I'm all for life safety, don't get me wrong. I've never heard of a person getting electrocuted from their refrigerator in their kitchen, but they put in the current code book that they want to adopt, it's in there that your refrigerator would be on a GFCI plug, which means in the middle of the night, it could, for whatever reason, just shut off. And, you know, who wants to lose all their bluebell to a thing that really doesn't need to be there? It's never been in the code, but it's there now. So there's lots of little things that just are weird in the new codes, and I do, I know Brian, and I'm sure you'll amend it responsibly, and that's the good thing, because I don't want, you know, we got to, we got to adopt it to see what's in it. We don't want to do that. We know what's in it, let's move our way around it. So thank you. Look forward to it.
Appreciate it, Dave. Now, council, you guys get to speak on the next item. So that was the last person I had. Brian Holmes is walking up.
Would you all like to talk about fire codes?
Sure.
We don't have to.
Sure, sure.
As with the building codes, we are looking to adopt the 2024 International Fire Code and 24-101, which is the life safety code. Short, sweet, as the building construction changes, the fire codes will change. It's generally written, in critical incidents that occurred, a lot of times people say it's written in blood because somebody has lost their life or got critically injured. But as construction changes, some of the rigid portions of the code that exist can be, are relaxed because of the construction that's built. So the fire code changes within that. That's why we want to, we want to make sure that we're moving and adjusting and moving towards the newest or within fire code, that we're able to maintain that type of life safety for all of our residents, our firefighters, and our visitors that come into the city.
Thank you, sir. All right, I don't have any other slips, so there being no one else desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing regarding local code amendments and move on to item 11B. Bear with me here for a second. Consider on first reading and ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration, Article 2 Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Division 1 Generally, Section 2-21 Definitions, and Division 5 Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals, Section 2-46 Created Membership, and Section 2-48 Powers and Duties, and Division 12 Zoning Board of Adjustment, Section 2-83 Powers and Duties of the Friendswood City Code. Secondly, Chapter 14 Building and Building Regulations of the Friendswood City Code, and Third, Chapter 30 Fire Protection and Prevention, Article 3 Fire Codes, Division 2 International Fire Codes, Section 30-84 International Fire Code Adopted Amendments, and Division 3 Life Safety Code, Section 30-119. Appeals of the Friendswood City Code to update the name of the Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals and the duties of such board, as well as the duties of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, and to adopt the 2024 International Code Council Model Construction Codes, the 2023 National Electrical Code, and local amendments thereto. Any questions? Any comments? It's a mouthful. It's a lot. Problem? Councilmember Font.
Yes, I read this, and alarm bells went off all over the place. This is not just adopting the new 2024 International Building Codes. We've heard our building inspector say that they're going to rewrite all our local ordinances, and sometimes those local ordinances are superior to the international building laws because our codes are going to be written in such a way. And I tried to read through the entire document, and it's not just changing the Board of Adjustments from planning and zoning. There's powers that are going to be given to our staff that I am so glad the man who came and spoke publicly about it, but I would personally like to see our staff, and we've done this in the past, everywhere there's going to be a change in the current ordinances to be written in blue, and that's the Friendswood ordinance, and everywhere it's going to be changed by the International Business Code, be written in red, and everywhere our local code is going to supersede the Business International Code, which sometimes aren't as stringent as our own local codes. I'd like to see that, because throwing all of this in in one paragraph is unfair to this council. And it, I've read it three times, and that was 52 pages of, and I couldn't tell what was old ordinances and what was new ordinances and what we're changing and what we're expected to be looking at. And our building inspector said he wasn't going to pay for it. No, he's not. Our developers are going to pay for it, and even our residents, if they have an old barn in their backyard that's looking a little dilapidated, the city staff can send somebody out there and tell them they better do something with it. And I know we have some problems with some, it's written right there, Aubrey. It's written in there about buildings that are not looking very good and nuisances and stuff like that. That's all in there right now, but I'd like to see what's new and what is old. And so to throw 52 pages of what we're going to be changing and what we don't know what we're changing is, I think, unfair, and I'd like to make a motion to postpone this vote until staff is able to prepare for us what is new, what is already in the code, and the difference between, just so we can get an idea of what we're voting for, that I would like to make that motion to postpone.
Second. Okay, I've got motion and a second to postpone. I'd like to ask a question of the staff. What is the, what's going to happen if we postpone this? What's the driving timeline here?
We were looking at an effective date of March 1st, 2026. So we have a little bit of time, but we wanted to be able to advertise to the builders and contractors from January, for January, February, March, that, or January, February. We've been talking about this for a year, year and a half with all of our contractors in all of our DRC meetings. It's been in our, you know, we've been talking about it for a long time, so it's.
It's not a surprise.
No, not at all.
Any questions or comments on?
We can definitely accommodate the request for postponement if that's the desire of this council. Keep in mind, the state of Texas themselves are going to be same code, so it's not just going to be Friendswood, but I definitely understand the concern about highlighting the differences. We can do that.
I've got a couple of questions. So procedurally, if we, even though the state of Texas is going to take on some of these with amendments, it sounds like, or not, what impact does that have on us? Do we, are superseded by them? Only if our ordinance is changed should we be different than the state? I'm just wondering, procedurally, if the state adopts it, what impact does that have on us? Any?
So we would have the authority and autonomy of our building codes in the city of Friendswood. So even though the state of Texas adopts the 2024, their rules relative to the building and fire code do not apply in the city of Friendswood unless their supersedes ours. Now, that being said, every jurisdiction is allowed to adopt amendments to the code. The bigger concern we have is if we fall out of two cycles. So these are done every three years. 2024 is the one we're looking at, and it was done in 2021 and 2018. If we get more than a six-year window out, then we start getting impacted, our insurance rating system, meaning your homeowner's insurance will go up.
Because state law mandates that you would be within a two-code cycle period.
For existing homeowners or new homeowners?
Everybody.
Everybody, because existing homeowners aren't going to go out and update the code immediately or anything like that.
Correct, but that's how they base the insurance rating system.
And so tell me, just for clarity, when do we have to worry about that rate increase to, of homeowner, of our insurance?
Well, we're currently in 2018 codes, and we're now sitting at 2025, so we're already running the risk of being out of two cycles, code cycles out. So if we don't adopt soon, then we have an issue.
Okay. So one, I think, one last question, and that is, we heard about amendments. So by, if we approve what's on the agenda tonight, that is taking it in whole cloth, just the way it's written, is that, is that, what is it, what's the real impact of our vote tonight that you're asking us to take? Is it that we're going to go with the 2024 with just the way it's written?
For the most part, yes. The building, the IBC, the IRC, basically, our local amendments are just the sections that we have to change, saying that we're adopting this code. And so there's, under the IRC, there's a table that you have to fill in your local information for that table. We don't have any major, the fire code, I think, had the most local amendments. The state also prohibits us from, you know, making a lot of changes to, like, materials and things like that. We used to have local amendments regarding electrical wiring and things like that, and the state said that we can't do that anymore. So our hands are a little bit tied as far as, you know, some of the changes that we can make.
So the existing ordinances that we have, that we have local authority to make some changes, have, I mean, are there five of them, 10 of them, hundreds? I mean, I'm just trying to get a flavor for what's happened in the past as far as, do we have lots of local codes that are different? Or are we 98% or, I mean, some number, very, very close to just taking the 2018, as Marad said?
We're, yeah, I'd say we're 98, 99%.
So historically, the local amendments have been more burdensome on the contractors. We've really cleaned up our codes to just streamline them to the existing, through state law and the adoption of the codes, they, like Aubrey said, they really limit us. A good example of one of the state laws is we cannot enforce the sprinkler system in residential construction. If we didn't have it adopted prior to 2006, we can't enforce that. So I'm assuming some of these burdensome things that the state is not in favor of will come out into that same sort of application that they did with prohibiting the residential sprinkler system. As far as Friendswood, like I said, our amendments that we pulled out made it less burdensome on the contractors, where we, before, didn't allow the aluminum wire, we didn't, we required far more restrictive means, because that's the only thing we could do. We can't lessen the code. We can only increase the code with our amendments.
Okay. Or we can not adopt it and face the impact of insurance rates?
Correct, and obviously, with the cost of homeowner's insurance currently, that's a major factor in this area.
So the staff recommendation at this point is to accept the 2024 in whole cloth effective when?
March 1st, but if there's a concern that things are not highlighted properly, we'll gladly give you a changes marked version of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any that we are increasing that are more rigorous or burdensome?
So as far as on the building side, the only real change that I've got on the residential is I require an engineer stamp on the foundations. That is literally, I think, other than the administrative ones, which we would require anyway based on our windstorm requirements. So again, our intent was to streamline and make it as clean as we could and not put these additional burdens on the contractors. I was a home builder as well, so I'm very familiar with kind of the cause and effect of municipalities adding these burdens on there. The code is very, very good about creating a template for all communities. Again, that's why it's the international code. The changes that we're making in this one are pretty much, we're just turning the page, and the administrative things that we passed the last time are just administrative amendments that we're moving into this code cycle. As far as the progression of the codes, this is, this is naturally how things are going to go regardless.
And on the fire side?
The other thing that's really making things more stringent are a problem that we've found in our multi-story facilities that have, which we have a lot of older folks in. They, they'll have elevators in a building, three-story above have an elevator, but there's no generator backup for them. So if they lose power, the folks are trapped or they have to wait till the fire department can get there to evacuate 100 people out of this building. So with that being said, we're, we put into the code to require a backup generator for the elevators in three stories and above any building in the city.
So I would, I understand what Robert, Councilmember Font is asking, and, but if 99% of the code is just mirroring this, what we have to adopt, the state, or it's the same, or it's administrative procedures, I'd like to see the ones, if the building one is only a stamp for the foundation, but the fire, I mean, that's a very good one. I would really support that, to have a local ordinance that said you have to have a backup generator for something more than three, you know, maybe even three stories. If you could give us those kinds of things, if there's just a few of them, that would be helpful. I don't know that we need to go through the whole 52 pages and all those. I wouldn't be in favor of that, but if you can sum it up like you did, there's one in the building code, and there are three or four in the life and safety or fire code, whatever it is, then I would be in favor of that.
So procedurally, we have a.
So procedurally, we have a, we have a motion and a second to postpone the item. This is a two-reading ordinance. If council would entertain approving it on first reading, we can bring you those changes marked on second reading. If you'd rather postpone it, that's fine as well. I mean, there's six in one, half a dozen the other.
I was going to say that.
You would say it far better than I would.
Thank you. Yes, I understand where you're coming from, Robert. Hey, I'm for a small government as well, but you know, the state gets in our knickers on all kinds of things, and the building code, fire code are one of those things that we, we just have to sometimes swallow.
The state does, and our local, and our local government gets in our knickers too.
Oh, I know. That's what I'm saying, yes.
And just over time, these things layer on and layer on.
And I agree with you.
It becomes more onerous and more costly.
Yes, writing this into one ordinance is a big bite to.
Well, this is one ordinance, if you read it. It's all-inclusive.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying. It's a big, it's a big ordinance, and it's all-inclusive, and so I understand your hesitance there, but you know me, I'm a guy that, hey, I want to move these things down the road. I'm not, I do not procrastinate things. I don't, when there's an option to postpone, I don't take it. I want to, so I'm going to vote against postponing this, but I want to hear everybody else before I call for the vote.
It's the first reading.
It's the first reading.
So we can get more information before the second reading?
Correct. We don't have to approve the second reading if you're not happy, is an option. Now, that's not normally how we would do things, but it is an option.
Procedurally, though, Mayor, if we approve it tonight, knowing that we'll get a second reading, and we see this red line that Roberts asked for, and I quite honestly would like to see all the changes, just so we know what we're voting on for sure, then if we come back in the next meeting in January and say, well, look, you know, we like this tweet, you know, this one, we need to talk more about this one change, I'm just making up that there might be something in there, does that then put us back to square one?
It does, because if we change it, we have to start over and process. It takes two votes, so we're not, we're not losing anything by voting tonight. We may not be gaining, but at least we're not starting next month at square one. We possibly are at square two if you guys are all happy with what you see.
So just speaking pragmatically, let's say the vote to postpone doesn't pass, and it gets approved on first reading, we will provide you guys a changes marked version. If you don't agree with the changes marked version, we don't have to have a third reading of the ordinance, simply because it's, any local amendments that we would have adopted would have been super, more stringent than the state laws. So if you say, hey, I don't like this amendment, take it out, then we're in essence lessening what was posted, so we should be fine theoretically. But we're fine either way. If y'all want to postpone a month, we'll survive.
Murad, sorry, Joe. You know, you did have the option at some point to adopt the 2021, so I was kind of curious as to, you know, we jumped two iterations effectively.
So we did that intentionally. Simply put, you don't want builders to have to go through this every three years.
Yep.
So we intentionally skip every three years so that there's some consistency for those that are building and developing in the community.
Sure, totally understand that.
Any other comments on the motion to postpone?
Just one, a second, what Robert said about, I think we have to be understanding of what we're voting on, and if we don't understand it, we shouldn't vote on it. So I think the clarity that's necessary by red line, giving us the red lines or blue lines or whatever it is of the code changes, it's very important that we understand that, because at the end of the day, we're here to explain to the constituency why we do what we do, not just to say, staff told us to do it. So I'm not saying you did.
No.
In any way, shape, or form, but I would.
And that's on me. I should have provided y'all with the changes marked version, so I apologize for that.
You can get it for the second reading.
You can get it for the second reading, or even if this is postponed, you'll definitely get it.
We will get the red line, blue lines, no matter what.
Yes, ma'am.
And then if we have changes to that, even if we don't post, vote to postpone tonight, we still have a chance to make changes before that second reading?
In theory, yes. Obviously, I'm not a legal scholar or expert here. If there are something that doesn't quite meet the notice requirements, we may have to have a third reading of the ordinance, but practically speaking, it's not likely to happen.
And the third reading doesn't upset your schedule necessarily, Aubrey, is that right?
Not necessarily, no. Like I said, we were planning on the March 1st effective date anyways, so we do have a little bit of wiggle room. I will say, like, a lot of this was some reorganization of the code that was there before. Some of the code was left from the, when we, when the city of Friendswood used to, all the cities used to issue electrical licenses, and so there was some, like, permitting and inspection policies that were just under the electrical section, and we moved those up to make them more general and applicable across the board regarding, you know, permits, certificates of occupancy, inspections, those kind of things we were trying to generalize. So that's, it was reorganization of, and clarification of practical, you know, the way that we handle things practically, we tried to put it all in writing. So that was some of the impetus of the extent of the changes, but yeah, I think just, we could give you just a summary of those changes.
So those are kind of the administrative changes you were talking about?
Yeah, yes.
I understand, but we will highlight, even if it's a red line, because it got moved to a different section, but it's the same code, just cleaning it up, we will highlight that for you so that there's no confusion. And again, I'm sorry, this should have been in your backup material for this item.
So I understand, if we vote affirmatively tonight on this ordinance as proposed on the agenda, we have, you will get us the information we're talking about, and we will have the opportunity to amend it, not vote on it, or vote on it next month, depending on the information we get and what we decide, correct? So there's no reason really not, in my mind, to vote for it tonight, so we can just keep moving it, because we have time. Okay.
You have time.
Okay.
Keep it moving. And to your point, Michael, I feel like, what I know about this, I could explain it to a resident. Now, if this was a resident like you that I know is knowledgeable, I'm going to bring Brian Ruin with me, because this is the guy that knows the details, or Brian Holmes, if it's on the fire side. But I feel like, and hey, let's face it, you know, these ideas for change, updating our, these don't come from me. These come from the professionals in the room, the city staff that we pay to keep our city moving forward, and, you know, we're basically ratifying what they are bringing to us, which is their job and our job, so having said that, is there any more discussion?
Sorry, sorry, Mayor, but it could change my vote, so I'm hesitant to ask, but I understand what you're saying, and I actually agree with what you said. So Brian and Brian, I mean, could you guys tell us what the major changes are? I don't need to know, I don't need to know about administrative, some of the things, moving section to section, but if you, if you're able to do it, I mean, because that would make me feel better, could you explain what the major differences are?
May I interject real quick?
No.
I would hate for them to not summarize something in its totality, and then when you get the changes marked, that they forgot something, so I would much rather, at my request, would you just simply postpone this item? I would hate for them to go to, through two or three items and fail to give you a fourth one because they just didn't recall off the top of their head, and then when we give you the changes marked, I would hate for you to think that.
That's fair, I mean, that's fair. I wasn't trying to create a trap at all. I really, you know, felt like, do we know what we're voting on, and I was hoping to use that information to help me understand, yes, here are the material things that we're being asked to vote on, and I could live with that, but without knowing, but I understand, I understand the trap that that puts out there, it wasn't my intention to do that.
And I wasn't suggesting that it was nefarious in nature, I just, I think it'd be a lot simpler if council had the same sheet of music to look at, and they could clearly identify what's new and what's different, so my apologies on that.
And Mayor, I have real-world examples how this can affect people here in Friendswood, with awnings, with attachments to restaurants, and with sprinkling a building that's under 9,900 feet, but if you extend an awning out five feet, that would have to be sprinkled, even though that's not a part of the, part of the building. So these are real-world things that are going to be affected by this order, by what we pass here, and if I, if I don't know what I'm voting on, and I can't see how that's going to affect the people who have contacted me, who have real concerns about what we do as a city and a staff and what we do as our building, then I want, I want to see it before I vote on it, and that's why I'm going to vote for.
That's one of the questions I did ask.
The motion to extend.
And I did ask a particular question about current restaurant, that will this change affect it? And they, and they said, the answer is no. This will not affect that. The ordinance is not changing in that regard. It's still the same answer.
There was ways to get around the ordinance. That was the answer. There's ways to get around it. Well, the only way you can have flexibility is not in our code ordinances, local code ordinances. The flexibility is given to you in the international business code. When we go more stringent than the international business code, then our ordinance are more stringent.
No, and we have a solution for that particular example, and I encourage you, if you can.
But that's only one. Like I said, I have several.
But the short answer is, there are two components to this. There's the international building code and fire code, and then there's the local amendments. The changes to the international building code and fire code between 2018 and 2024 are out of our control. We can't do anything about that. If the city chooses to adopt local amendments that are more stringent than those codes, we can highlight those changes for you so that you have some idea of what's being changed. But outside of that, whatever's in that 2024 IBC and the 2024 IFC, we don't have a choice but to adopt those.
That's what I want.
That's exactly what I want to see, what our codes are in more stringent manner than what is adopted by the international code.
Yes, sir.
All right, I think we've all had a chance to speak at least twice, maybe, maybe five times.
I apologize.
That's all right.
And this is on me, so my apology.
So we have a motion to postpone this item. So all in favor of postponing this item for a month, raise your hand. All in favor of not postponing the item, okay, so we won't postpone the item. So now we are down to a motion, can I get a motion on the item at hand? Anybody?
Motion to approve.
I will second. Any further comment? Now we're on a different motion, so Roberts' rules resets, you can actually talk more, although you may have used up your two and two.
Well, I would just hope that the people will recognize who's trying to actually get the definitions and the information that we need to make, to make this decision versus just going along with staff and saying, okay, well, we trust you, we're going to let you do whatever the staff thinks is necessary, without, we'll just go along to get along.
All right, well, for those of us on this side of the dais, I will just say that this item was posted two weeks ago, I think, and there've been two weeks to ask questions and talk, and yes, well, maybe you didn't ask enough questions, I don't know, but Murad admits that another backup piece of material would have been nice, but I'm just saying that, you know, don't, you know, call us lemmings over here because we're in favor of moving this along and getting the job done and not dragging our feet on something that is going to affect these people come March 1st. So the more, you know, the quicker we get the job done and have this thing out there for them, I think it's better, personally.
So the reason I voted the way I voted was not because I don't want to know those answers, Robert, but it was because of what I had asked earlier. If we go ahead and approve the first reading, that does not preclude us from getting the thing that you just said you would give to us this next month, and it does not preclude us from in the second reading saying, no, we want these things answered or different, changed, but if we don't, if we're all in agreement and they've been answered to our satisfaction, then we have the opportunity to vote for it at the second reading. So there's no reason, in my mind, since we're going to get what we need and we have another vote, to postpone it tonight. So that's why I voted the way I did, not because I'm not interested in the answers.
I have one comment, Mayor.
Go.
I want to be clear, I 100% back staff, and I was hoping, and I understand why you were asked not to answer, and I understand, I completely understand that, just in case there was something missing, but it's not because I don't trust what you do every day as your profession. I do 100% trust you, what you do. My problem is, is it's hard for me to vote for something that I don't, that I somehow thought I understood, but the more we talked about it, the more I realized there were some facts I wanted to make sure of, so I wasn't 100% sure that I did my due diligence, and that's why I'm not going to support the motion.
Anyone else? We've got a motion and a second to pass this on first reading. All in favor? Opposed? Raquel, four to three. Thank you. Item 12, proposed ordinances and resolutions, and by the way, Murad, you've got your marching orders there?
Yes, sir. And again, my apologies.
No, no, not required, but we will expect that next month, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the work that you're going to put in. 12A, consider on second and final reading an ordinance granting a franchise agreement to Waste Connections of Texas LLC for the collection, hauling, recycling, and disposal of municipal solid waste and recyclable materials in the city of Friendswood. This is the second reading and final reading on this ordinance. Any questions, comments, or further discussion on this one?
Motion to approve.
Motion is second. All in favor? Seven, nothing. 12B, consider on second and final reading an ordinance amending Appendix D, schedules of fees, rates, charges, deposits, bonds, and insurance amounts on the Friendswood City Code to update the solid waste fees commensurate with the solid waste franchise agreement. Again, this is the second and final reading. Any questions, comments, further discussion? You had a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor. Seven, nothing. 12C, consider on an ordinance repealing Chapter 70, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article III, Construction, Section 70-74, Duties of Abutting Property Owners, Failure of Property Owners to Have Work Done, and Section 70-75, Altering Lines or Grades When Putting Down Permanent Street Pavement in Their Entireties to Eliminate Certain Property Owner Responsibilities and to Conform the Friendswood City Code to Current Practices, and Amending Chapter 70, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article III, Construction, Section 70-81, Extending in the Street of the Friendswood City Code to Differentiate Between the Permitted Height of Plants, Trees, and Branches in and Over Public Streets from Those Over Pedestrian Areas Within Public Rides Away. Murad, you want to give us an overview?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council may recall that last month, we had a presentation regarding the trees within our right-of-way, mainly as they overhang the sidewalk. So over the travel lanes of streets, the current ordinance specified 15-foot clearance for sidewalks, it simply said reasonable height. Historically, the graphics that we sent out in the community through social media and what we measure against over sidewalks has always been 10 feet, but we felt at the request of council behoove us to go ahead and clarify an actual height so that there's no confusion, so that's what this ordinance is doing. The other thing this ordinance is doing is removing any ambiguity as far as sidewalk maintenance responsibilities. The current code stipulates that abutting property owners may be required to maintain those sidewalks, even though it's within our public right-of-way. We are clarifying that. The platino stipulate that if it's in the public right-of-way, it's the city's responsibility, so we're making sure that the two of those issues are congruent.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, Murad.
Mr. Ross.
I apologize for missing next. Last month, this was really kind of an item I really wanted to be able to discuss. I believe in our moniker that we're Friendswood, so, and wood comes from trees, and our emblem is a tree, so one of the things I really would like to do is make sure we're protecting our trees, especially the maintenance of them. Generally speaking, the ones that are problematic for this ordinance are the oak, live oak trees that are overhanging the street, and I think you and I have talked out quite a bit about it, and you will see that I'm not in any disagreement with the 15-foot heights requirement on the street. Do protest a bit on the 10-foot height requirement on the branches overhanging the sidewalks or the right-of-way from the street back to the sidewalk, inasmuch as, I don't know how many basketball players we have in this community, but that's several, several feet above anybody's height. I think there's a couple 6'10" gentlemen in this town, and I do understand the city's idea behind, hey, if we, if we make it eight feet, then if it sags because it grows or so on, then we're right back there in a year or a month or whatever it is, but at the same time, that's, again, this is creeping up on how things, liberties get taken away. You make it easier on people or on the city staff to administer the policy, but at the same time, you know, why not 12 feet next? Why not 14 feet next over the sidewalks? I get it. I, I get it. Uh, I, I did some research. We would be the only city in the state of Texas that requires 10 feet. And I saw you did some research on your end for the 15 or 14 feet, and you, you pulled some examples in, in your presentation. So, uh, every other city in the state of Texas is either eight or seven feet for this overhang over sidewalks. And, uh, I, I feel like that's an appropriate height. Uh, if you go look, and I've, I've got pictures, but I didn't pull them together for the presentation tonight, but there are trees all over town that eight-foot, uh, would be fine, and in 10-foot, we're cutting off substantial branches this big over sidewalks if we are going to enforce the ordinance. Uh, so it, it becomes very much to the citizens that came and complained, they, they all of a sudden are very right in that you would be butchering a tree when you're cutting off limbs, you know, eight inches or 10, 12 inches in diameter. Uh, so I, I would hope we could maybe amend that to read eight feet. Uh, that would be at the top of any other city in the Texas area. Again, I, I did study this. I'll, I'll paint you the ordinances if you'd like, but, uh, I, I think 10 feet's too high.
And from our perspective, it is not the goal or the desire of the city to have our crews touching anybody's tree. Simply put, anytime we engage a homeowner about this issue, the onus is placed on them to address and remedy the issue so that there is not a question as to whether or not the, the branch was cut properly at the right-of-way line as opposed to being manicured by an arborist at the trunk where it should be trimmed. But as you know, by law, we are not allowed to enter private property to trim people's trees, so that's why it's cut at the right-of-way line. If council feels eight feet is, uh, the preferred height, I am perfectly okay with that. The only thing that that presumably does to us is we're gonna be out there more frequently because no homeowner likes to trim their trees when they're contacted by the city. The example that was discussed at the workshop last month, that individual was a frequent flyer for the last several years, their property was, and in particular, before we even cut the tree, they were noticed in June and didn't touch the tree till September till we finally got out there and cut it. So, um, going with a lower height just makes the, the likelihood of the frequency of us going back more often higher. But I'm okay with eight feet if that's this council's desire.
Was the complaint relative, specific to that tree? Or, and I know the tree, and I've looked at it, and I could see where school buses were regularly hitting it because it was in a curve in the road, and it was not, you would have to cross the center line and hit oncoming traffic potentially to avoid the tree. So again, the, there, there's kind of a, a higher level of health, safety, and welfare for the tree limbs that are impacting the roadway as opposed to the sidewalks. It's more of a, a nuisance for that component of it. Uh, we, we, we do, if you go through the community again, and if you strictly adhere to this, and this is what I'm worried about, you start strictly adhering to this. I kinda like your other wording, reasonable, better than giving a specific number, but if you have a specific number, I think eight feet is a reasonable number. Uh, you, you, you're not impacting as many homeowners because, again, yes, it's in the city's right-of-way. It's not, no longer on the city, citizens' property. But at the same time, we are Friendswood. We're, we're, we're not, you know, anything. We, we have a reputation of having beautiful trees in this community. Spreading oaks is an example, right out the door. Uh, you know, Liberty Oak is in, is, uh, noncompliance of this ordinance as it sits today. I went and measured it. There's got several limbs that are eight feet, eight and a half, nine. So I, I don't think we want to sit there and say, this is what, you know, 10 feet's the answer. Now, Robert, kill trees. Come on. I've had my say, thank you.
I will say on the Liberty Tree, there's no sidewalk on that side of the street, so there's no violation there.
It's still right-of-way. It's, it's, the way the ordinance is written is it's the, the width of the right-of-way over where the, where it would be.
Councilmember Brant.
If I, if I may, so a couple of things. One, I know we are complaint-driven, so the impetus for trimming the trees is because, for example, a school bus can't clear it without hitting the branches, right? So we're not gonna be out with a measuring stick. And it's truly for a school bus, not for people being able to walk under it. It's for large vehicles to be able to clear that without hitting the branches. Is that correct?
Correct, but we do get calls from residents complaining that tree limbs overhanging the sidewalks are too low. And to avoid any confusion, that's why we're recommending getting rid of the reasonable threshold or litmus test and have a, a finite number.
Right. It's easier to.
Adjudicate that.
Yes, yeah, when it's, when it's, when you're doing this, it's really hard to be specific. So I think being specific, I, I don't have a problem with the 10 feet. I think that that was driven by the complaints that we were getting with regard to school buses being able to go underneath those branches. And I, I would support the 10 feet.
Well, I'm 6'2", and I regularly walk my neighborhood, and I hit my head on some of the branches that we walk under. So I'd be okay with eight.
Complaint-driven. Do you need the phone number? All right, any other comments?
Yeah, one, can you give me the background on the 10? I think when you and I met.
So the tenant.
Going, going through this, I mentioned that I could see you having to do maintenance in the right-of-way. You would have to bring equipment in or that sort of thing. That would behoove you to, you know, to have that extra space. What, which, what was the thinking in 10?
So it's our desire to have as few interactions with, uh, noncompliant properties as possible. Simply put, anytime you're engaging a citizen and telling them, hey, you have something that's in violation, it's not a pleasant conversation. Hence why it took so many months to address the issue on Marywood. Uh, so the 10-foot gave us additional time. So every time it rains, these oak trees, uh, will hold a lot of water. Those branches get saturated, and they'll dip six inches to a foot. Uh, having 10 feet gives us more time in between having to address that issue over and over again. Realistically, it's, should be the desire of homeowners with these trees to, to cut off branches early at the trunk, 12, 13 feet in the air so that the canopy continues to grow up, not out, uh, as it pertains to the right-of-way. Because simply put, you're just, you're causing more harm to the, to the travel lanes.
Because these right-of-ways are typically next to roadway.
Yes.
And if it's eight feet, as an example, next, at the sidewalk, how long is it gonna be? 10 feet or seven feet at the roadway? Is that sort of?
That is correct. Now, if we're at 10 feet, we obviously have more time before that potential, uh, whether the tree is sagging due to rain or whatever the case may be. Um, but if this is the council's desire to do eight feet, I'm fine with eight feet. We need a, we need a finite number, is my recommendation.
Okay. We have a motion on the table.
One last rebuttal, if I may.
Complaint-driven shouldn't be how we operate a city. We are, should be service-driven. We are servants. So I, when we hear that we're responding or only operating based on complaints, that is not doing our citizens' service. So I get that. That is a, a large portion of our job is to listen. Not all of them are complaints, but at the same time, we are, we are service-driven, and I would hope that we would see it that way. At least, that's the way I see it.
And we do, but the difficulty lies in, in staffing and resources. So if you want us to actually go out there and survey where the violations are, we're gonna have to triple, quadruple our staffing to keep up, not with just this ordinance, but all the ordinances. So much like a police officer traveling 528, they're not gonna see every time in individual speeds, but the ones that they do see, they are gonna address. And this works in a very similar fashion. When Councilmember Mary Portem Ellisor says he hits his head on a tree, if he picks up the phone and contacts us, there's an easier likelihood for us to address that as opposed to having staff go evaluate 30,000 miles of sidewalks on a regular basis. And, and I don't mean to be argumentative, and I apologize for the, the tone. Uh, but we don't have the resources to, to go out there and evaluate all the violations on a regular basis.
But I would like to say that, I've heard you say this more than once, Marad, that the white glove service, especially where it came to trash collection. The city of Friendswood tries to service the citizens as professionally and as courteously as they possibly can. So when we say we are complaint-driven, I feel like you took that out of context. What I was meaning is that we're not gonna go around measuring all the trees in Friendswood for exactly the reason that Marad just described, but we do try to provide the excellent customer service to our citizens. That's why we're all up here working so darn hard. So I, I would not, I would ask you to not take that comment out of context.
Um, the only thing I would say, Michael, I think that the whole dais would welcome an amendment to eight feet if you wanted to make that amendment. Right now, if we vote for this, it's going to be 10 feet. Of course, you have heard my, when we're in agenda prep, I have no real affinity to trees. I, I'm a tree farmer. I cut them down, I sell them, and I plant them and regrow them. I, I know they're a renewable resource, but, um, if, if you would like to make an amendment to eight feet, they'll welcome this, they may second it, they may not, and, uh, and we can just move on. I'm like the mayor on county, I'm tired of talking about trees. I'm like the mayor on some things.
And I understand it. I, I, unfortunately, like I said, I missed last meeting, so I make a motion to amend the height over the sidewalk from the back curb to the right-of-way effectively to be eight feet.
Okay. The original motion came from Councilmember Brant.
We didn't have.
We discussed.
We have a, we didn't have motions for that? Okay, that makes it easier. All right.
So just for clarification, so is it to approve the ordinance with the change from 10 to eight feet? Is that your motion?
Exactly, yes. Just change that 10 to an eight.
And for the benefit of everybody having a say, I'll second his motion.
All right. So the motion on the table is approve this ordinance, uh, I think on first reading with the amendment that we reduce that 10-foot clearance to eight feet.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor of that?
Wait, what is it?
Approve it at eight feet.
We're approving eight.
Approve it at eight feet.
Instead of 10.
Very close.
All right. Opposed? Five to two. Passes.
I would say not, I wouldn't say complaint-driven. I would say report-driven.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just a little tidbit there.
That item is concluded. 12D, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026 by approving Budget Amendment 2 and approving for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Thank you, Rhonda. 12E, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a finance contract with Government Capital Corporation for the financing of a ladder truck for Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department, Inc. Marad, do you have anything?
Uh, just simply noting, this item has been in our discussion for the better part of a year. Originally, we were gonna do a new build on a fire truck, and we've since changed gears and located one that's already in production so that we got a quicker timeline on it. Much like we promised council, these vehicles are extremely expensive, so it's being amortized over a 10-year period to provide us some budget certainty because we don't have that amount of money in the bank to go purchase the truck brand-new.
Understood. I was looking around the room because, uh, one of our chiefs walked in earlier, but I guess he left. Had to go, okay. I'm ready for a motion.
One, one question for you, Marad. What is the likelihood that we would need another ladder truck, and what's the timeframe?
So, the last one lasted 25 years. Uh, I will say for the better part of the last eight years, they were contacting me routinely, and I, Brian would bring it up in our monthly meetings that they're spending anywhere from $50,000 to $60,000 every two or three months in repairing the truck. So, uh, vehicles of that size have a lot of gadgets on them and a lot of hydraulics on them that tend to go out over time. So probably a 20-year life is reasonable.
But a full build-out of the community, we're only gonna need one ladder.
Uh, at full build-out, right now, we anticipate, uh, one. But if we get a lot of redevelopment.
What if we add multi-story, additional multi-story buildings?
No, it's the same. So with the sprinkler requirements for multi-story buildings, you shouldn't need that as frequently.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Good. Item 12F. Consider a resolution to consider authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year municipal lease purchase agreement with Motorola Solutions, Inc. for the purchase and installation of AXS Dispatch console equipment and APX N70 portable radios to replace end-of-service life radios and console systems in the Friendswood Police Department.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Chief Rogers, thanks for being here. Always good to see you, sir, in uniform, looking sharp. Any discussion? All in favor? Good job. Okay. Item 12G, consider a resolution casting its votes in the election of members of the Board of Directors of the Galveston Central Appraisal District, GCAD, for 2026. And, uh, I got further comments here. I recommend that council cast, cast its votes for Matt Doyle and Thomas Farmer as indicated on the resolution and ballot attached to the agenda item. Uh, for further clarification, we are, uh, sort of joining arms with our school district who has a lot more votes to cast than we do. Our 65 votes doesn't really make a whole bunch of difference, but, uh, to, to sort of, uh, not dilute our votes, we're aligning with a couple of good candidates that they have, uh, recommended to us, so.
Did you make a motion? Was that your motion?
How about if I rephrase that? I motion that council cast its votes for Matt Doyle and Thomas Farmer as indicated on the resolution and ballot attached to the agenda item.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any comment on that? Discussion? All in favor? Here, here you. Motion passes, seven, nothing. Item 13, Consent Agenda. I need a motion approving the consent agenda items 13A through 13K with the exception of item 13C, as it is not ready at this time.
And I'd like to remove another one for discussion. And is it, which one, Mo, what's it?
13I.
It's the, um, I, yes, related to the tax increment reinvestment zone, number one.
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion approving the consent agenda items.
I would also like to pull D if we could, for discussion.
Say that again?
Item D for discussion.
B or D?
D as in dog?
Delta.
D.
Delta, excuse me.
Okay, I got you. All right, I need a motion approving consent agenda items 13A through 13K with the exception of items 13C, Charlie, 13D, Delta, and 13I, India.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? All right. Going back, uh, to, let me go in order here. 13 Bravo is consider a resolution suspending the December 19th, 2025 effective date of Texas, Mexico.
No, not Bravo, Delta.
Delta.
My fault.
D.
C and D.
Oh, yeah, we talked about that, Delta. Sorry. I said it myself. I don't know why I went to Bravo. So.
Oh, okay, I got you.
So it's D and I?
C is not under consideration.
Right.
D, Delta, all right. Consider authorizing a license agreement with Friendswood Bristol Limited for the installation and maintenance of a 60-inch storm sewer line and a 6-inch utility sleeve for telecommunications services within a portion of the Chelsea Line right-of-way.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion?
So this item is on the agenda at the request of the developer that's developing the Bristol, which is a senior living community on North Friendswood Drive as you head towards Pearland on the left-hand side. Uh, they're needing, uh, an outfall for their detention ponds that will encompass part of Chelsea Lane. They're installing a 60-inch storm sewer line, so five-foot diameter line. They're paying for the installation and the maintenance in perpetuity. So the, the, the license agreement stipulates that they have to have certain provisions in place, uh, both from an insurance, uh, standpoint and as well as a maintenance responsibility standpoint moving forward.
So in, in what way do they, is there a guarantee that they're going to, let's say, escrow the funds to maintain the private line?
So much like anything else, we require certain bonds to be submitted in order, and insurance provisions to be provided in our license agreement. But if the property owner fails to maintain it, we then have the ability to go in and maintain it and levy a lien against the property. We did this very same thing last month. A resident came up concerning a property next to Shepherd's Nook. We had been trying to get the property mowed for a number of months. The, the property owner refused to accommodate the, or address the violation, so the city ultimately went and mowed the property and then put a lien on the property. So this would, uh, function in similar fashion. If they don't maintain this line and there's an issue, obviously, we're not gonna let the catastrophic failure of the line cause flooding, so we'll go in there and address it, and then we'll put a lien on the property.
Okay, so you're, if, if the pipe collapses for whatever reason,
Okay, so you're, if the pipe collapses for whatever reason, and they don't have the wherewithal to fix it, we'll fix it?
Correct.
And put a lien on the property, and we'll recover our money, and when and if they ever sell it?
Correct.
This is irrespective of ownership, moving forward 10, 20 years down the road? This is a covenant running? Is the land, is a deed restriction?
We did a similar thing with the Sterling Creek development, Sections 1 and 2. It took some acreage from the city, I say took. We did a license agreement, and they utilized acreage that the city owned to locate their detention pond. If that detention pond fails due to maintenance upkeep, it's the responsibility of the Sterling Creek, each way to address it. If they fail to do it, the city of Friendswood will engage and then put a lien on the property.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. On item 13D, Delta, I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Thank you. 13I, India, Consider Appointing The Members Of The City Council As Members Of The Board Of Directors Of Reinvestment Zone Number One, City Of Friendswood, And Receive An Update Concerning The 2025 Advolar Taxes Assessments Due For Property Taxes Within Such Zone.
So two things on this, or if you want to entertain a motion first, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
I will motion, make the second.
So two things on this item, the reappointment of city council members to the tax increment reinvestment zone number one. Back in 2023, when you all were first appointed, you were named individually, so that we don't have to keep coming back here every two years, we're naming your positions for that role. So no longer Mayor Protam Elisor, it's now Council position number one, as a board of director for tax increment reinvestment zone number one. The second component of this agenda item had to do with property tax bills that went out recently, much like everybody else that owns property in Friendswood. You may have received a bill notifying you that you have till January 31st to pay your property taxes. Council, as part of the tax increment reinvestment zone in the public improvement district that was created for the city center, contracted with Galveston County Tax Office to collect the PIT assessments. A PIT assessment is not a tax, it's simply an assessment that the property owners out there willingly accept as a condition of ownership in the property. That PIT assessment pays the debt service for the PIT bonds that were issued out there for the public infrastructure. The developers cannot be reimbursed, be reimbursed this PIT assessment from the proceeds of the PIT bonds, much like your mortgage. You can't use your mortgage proceeds to pay yourself back for the mortgage payments that you pay your bank. This simply goes to the debt service of those, the PIT bonds that were already issued. Raquel, can you go to the, there should be an extra slide that highlights this. So there's two examples that I show on the screen before you. One for, and I did not include the ownership name, but the top one is for Lone Star. They own the majority of the Friendswood City Center. Their PIT assessment for this next year is, at the bottom, is over $1 million. That's the property owner's responsibility to pay that assessment in $1 million. None of the PIT bond proceeds will go to reimbursing the developer for that cost. And then the top one was another piece of property in $18,000. You may recall, the city of Friendswood established the public improvement district and the tax increment reinvestment zone as a financial mechanism to encourage the development of this property. This property had been looked at by a number of developers over the better part of 30 years, but to no avail. We never got anything remotely close to what's being proposed and what's being built out